We'll welcome everybody, welcome all our council members, manager Morales, Madam Clerk, and all our staff who are attending. I want to also welcome anybody who is watching on SGTV or live streaming. We ask that you, since it's not live, we don't need to worry about being interrupted, but please be attentive and we will move on. Madam Clerk, if you'll do the roll call, please.
I will, thank you Mayor. Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Forbes.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Millen.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Ostache.
Present.
Mayor Clock.
Here.
We have nine members present, zero absent.
Very good. Are there any announcements, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'd like everyone to know that recycling and yard waste collection has resumed and it is on your regular trash collection day. The services for bulk item collection, the city compost site, and the city's convenience station are suspended until further notice. Bill payments can be made online or by using the city's drop box located in the parking lot at the back of City Hall. Please be sure to enclose your payment in a sealed envelope. City Council's next regular meeting via teleconference is scheduled for Monday, May 4th, at 6:30 PM. City updates are posted on the city's website at www.saganaw-mi.com, on the city's Facebook page, and on SGTV Channel 191. And Mayor, we have a proclamation this evening and it is declaring April 24th, 2020 as Arbor Day.
Thank you, and I believe today we will be asking Councilmember Scherzer to read that proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City of Saginaw proclamation, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas, trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes and for our fires. Trees also increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. The City of Saginaw would like to recognize Trees for the Tri-Cities that was established in 2008 and since its inception has planted over 682 trees in various locations throughout the City of Saginaw. And whereas, trees provide numerous aesthetics and economic benefits, in which Trees for the Tri-Cities has made a significant investment to the community by purchasing, planting, watering, and nurturing trees in the City of Saginaw to improve the quality of life for city residents. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Trees for the Tri-Cities has collaborated with the City of Saginaw and committed to monitoring trees and replacing trees that were lost in various locations within the city. In 2019, the City of Saginaw Streets Section of the Right-of-Way Division also pruned 1,034 trees and removed 258 trees. Now therefore be it resolved, I Floyd Clock, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, to hereby proclaim April 24th, 2020 as Arbor Day in the City of Saginaw. And furthermore, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed this 20th day of April in the year of our Lord, 2020. Signed Floyd Clock, Mayor, as well as councilpersons Brenda F. Moore, our Mayor Pro Tem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Jamie Forbes, John Milne, Bill Ostache, Autumn L. Scherzer, and Reggie Williams II. Also signed Timothy Morales, our City Manager.
Thank you, Councilmember Scherzer. Thank you very much. All councilmembers and staff attending, I would ask that you mute your tablets when you are not speaking. It will help us all. Thank you. Now, Madam Clerk, I think next, we're all the way down to remarks of council, is that correct?
Yes, I just want to make a comment that no one signed up for public input for tonight.
Very good, thank you.
And therefore, we do move on to remarks of the council.
All right, and today we begin with Councilmember Williams.
Good evening. Yeah, good evening. Just want to share my continued gratitude and support for our essential workers that are still laboring for us, and I just really want to let everyone know, please exercise common sense when we are out in public. We've done a good job as a community over the last week with the drop in gatherings, which is really good, and I hope that that continues. But again, I stress and urge that we all use common sense when we're out and about and follow the stay-at-home orders as the governor's put out. That's all.
Thank you. Next will be Councilmember Ostache. Councilmember Ostache? You have to turn your mic on.
No, I'm unmuted, so.
All right.
Forgot to take me off. Good evening, everybody, and thanks, Mayor. I just want to share something quick. I pulled this from the Michigan website tonight under the coronavirus section, and the graph is something I'll post later on, but you can see back here in the beginning of March, and then as we go up through, as the governors start putting the executive orders in, we all knew this was going to happen, this is about a three-week stretch, but here we are today. So we can definitely see, and Councilman Williams was just talking about, the social distancing and the stay-at-home practices are starting to look favorable. And the reason why we're doing this is, over the last week since we've had our last meeting, there's just been a couple stories on Facebook, and my heart goes out to these families to actually read the postings, and I'd like to, if I haven't, with the rest of my time, I'll get out as much as I can here. This is somebody that posted on Facebook, they said, "I want to thank all the staff in the COVID-19 wing of Covenant Hospital for their compassionate care of my father. Being denied the comfort and the compassion of his wife and family, he struggled for breath. He was attended by the hard-working nurse who has overseen the COVID-19 patients. She FaceTimed my family so that we could all say our last words, words of encouragement and love. How many families does she have to assist with their isolated loved ones as they take their last breath? I know not, nor do I know the toll that it takes on her as she washes them depart, nor the risks that she also puts herself in." So I just wanted to share that with people. This is why we're doing this. It really takes home, I have a very hard time reading that, and again, I just wanted to share that with our citizens.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Next will be Councilmember Balls. You have to unmute.
Thank you. I don't have a lot to share this evening, but I would like to mention something about the community and how a lot of young people are not wearing any safety P's at all. This left a grocery store a little while ago, and it seemed like everybody under 40 years old don't have on any mask, any gloves, anything. And I hate to see that, and I would hope that if they do hear me, that maybe they would think about wearing it because they can take that back and give it to their parents, grandparents, either their kids. This disease do not discriminate, and it's taking everybody out, you know, and I have a few friends, people I know who's sick, and it's not, it's really a terrible sickness to have on family members. Matter of fact, I have a niece that's, has the disease, and she's only like 26 years old, and it's terrible to see the pain that she's going through, and her and her boyfriend are both quarantined together right now, and it's just a sad situation for the whole family. So I would appreciate you guys pray for me and my family that my niece do get better. Other than that, it's not a lot that I could say this evening, but I do just want everybody to just think about being safe and think about your loved ones when you're coming in and out of this situation. I would like to mention too, that we, I had mentioned it before about the youth bill program that I'm involved in. We did get a grant, school's supposed to have been opening up in April, but due to the disease, they shut us down, and so we should be looking for students maybe in the next month or two. And this, they don't even want, we planned on having 50 students, and they said don't have no more than 10. Probably six students in the class, nowhere from 60 to 10 students. So everything is getting cut down and cut out, so I just wanted to let the citizens know to please try your best to be safe during this time, and don't get out of here and think that just because some people want everything in the end, don't mean that the disease is going to end because the study carrying on, they're talking about it may even build up, and I just hate to think what happened with people with just stimulus money coming around, now they, every day is like a Friday, you can see people going to the store, you know, and it's not going to be a healthy situation for our community, so that's what people think about that. Thanks, let me share.
Thanks, Councilmember. Next will be Councilmember Millen.
Thank you, Mayor Clock. Couple of city-related announcements, or things I want to talk about, and then one that's more of a public announcement. I noticed a Facebook posting that the Dawn of a New Day Coffee House donated meals to our police department, and they were handling the donation in a very safe manner. I saw a lot of face masks and gloves, and we wanted to thank them for that. One of those awards that we are pretty regularly winning these days in the public arena, our Public Works Fleet Operations Department was recognized nationally for its work, and City Manager has made us aware of another award in our Financial Services Department. So this is getting to be like a Big Ten school where you're regularly winning championships. I did want to make sort of a public service announcement, I'm a member of the Saginaw Exchange Club, and we normally have our annual fundraiser on Sunday, the first Sunday in May, this year it's May 3rd. That's going to be a virtual fundraiser this year. We're going to do our drawing online as a Facebook Live event at Saginaw Exchange Club. So for anyone who was planning to attend that, please look at the website and join us virtually for that fundraiser. And that's all my remarks for today. Oh, one other. I hope that our next meeting in May, if not the first, the second one in May, we're able to return to a regular meeting schedule. I think that's what the public is waiting for, to come for some public input. They like to see us in person and present their voice in person.
Thank you. Councilmember Scherzer is next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First want to say, it's great to see all of my fellow councilmembers, and last week I shared my feelings towards, and my sincere thanks to our healthcare workers, as well as our public service, our police and our fire department, but I really want this week to recognize our school districts for what they are doing to step up to make sure our kids are still learning and being educated until everything goes back to normal. And it may be a very long time until things do go back to a normal, but when, as we adjust to the new normal right now, our school districts are stepping up, they are still providing meals and feeding our children in the community, as well as providing technology and resources for them to continue to do stuff at home, so I really want to give a huge thanks, and I mean, thanks, thanks is a great way to show appreciation, but sometimes it just isn't enough, but our school districts are amazing and they're doing great things for our kids. And also to the parents who are stepping up and becoming more involved into our children's education and lives, some, it is just amazing to see the additional assistance that our students are receiving. And, you know, it's a hard time, but our youth are very important because they are eventually going to be in our seats, and they're going to be in leadership roles, and they're going to continue to grow into our community, so investing in them is really huge, so thank you to our districts. A lot of great organizations are in our community, and it is unbelievable how our community has come together. I just want to make note that the Partnership Network, as well as the Great Lakes Bay Employer Resource Network, which is my employer here in Saginaw, we are holding a food giveaway and a personal care item giveaway at CAC on Perkins this Thursday, and the giveaway starts at 10:00 AM, so if anybody's in need of food or personal care products, the line will start at 10:00 AM, so please come out, and if any councilmembers would like to assist me and volunteer, please just let me know. Other than that, that's all I have. Stay safe, Saginaw.
Will be Mayor Pro Tem Moore, I think I had my mic off there.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, hello to all of our councilpersons. Not a lot to talk about, a lot of meetings, a lot of virtual meetings going on with MML, National Leagues of Cities, the Governor's Office, and all of them. Basically, Saginaw, we're looking for rounds of money to help us to do some things in our area, and we're really, I think we're coming close, we had a workshop today with over 1,200 people signed up for, and everybody couldn't get on. So if you haven't been following MML, and I know I talk about them a lot, please go to your webpage and go on MML, because there's some great information out about small businesses, about what we're doing, and the things that we're getting ready to do. The other thing is, once again, I just want to do a friendly reminder that the weather is changing. Parents, I need you to help us. Councilmember Balls indicated, and he's true, and most young people, I don't know if they're thinking this is a game and it won't hit them, but this thing that we're dealing with, it does not discriminate. It does not discriminate, rich, poor, black, Hispanic, everybody's catching it. And so I wish that everybody would, if they can, try to locate a mask, or as they say, just put a scarf around your mouth. And for the young children, remind your children when they're outside playing to wash their hands, to wash their hands. The other thing I want to talk about for just the hot mandate is the census. Our numbers are down in Saginaw. We're at 22.9% for the City of Saginaw. I don't know if it's because everybody, or people have sent to me in mailing and the office is closed, but we really need to build our numbers, citizens. We need you to fill out your census form because that is the way for us to get money. If we don't fill them out, Saginaw will lose funding. We don't want to lose funding. I'd like to send out a special prayer for all of the families who have lost loved ones during this epidemic, and a special shout-out for the frontline runners. I have a goddaughter who had got infected. She had been staying at the hospital, but then she decided to go home, and when she got home, before she got home, she found out that she was infected. She's doing well, but she's isolating herself from her children and her family. So my prayers go out to every family who have been affected in any kind of way with this dredge of disease, and I need for everybody, don't think this is a joke, please, please. News like Reggie say, common sense. Don't go out if you don't have to, stay at home. It's making me crazy being at home, but I'm learning how to love my house, okay? I'm learning how to love it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. Next, we will have Councilmember Bench.
Hello, everybody. It's good to see everybody. Just want to, sorry, just echo what everyone else has already said, just a tremendous amount of gratitude to everyone who is working out there, whether it's retail or whether it's a medical position. I've got friends who are taking the time to go down to work in Detroit, where it's been a lot worse than here, because they have the ability to go down and help and they need it. The more time I think that passes, the harder it is to turn a blind eye if you were trying to in the first place, because there are so many people who I know at this point personally who are ill, self-isolating because they've been exposed to someone who tested positive. I have a friend who is one of the many aboard the Navy ship that has had so many people become ill, and it's just, it's just really hard to watch, and I really appreciate everybody who is going to work every day and making sure that those of us who are staying home can get food and prescriptions and the things that we need. And I'm just very grateful to our city staff for continuing to do what they need to do to keep the city moving, and it's just, it's probably going to be a while before things get back to normal, and whatever normal looks like after this is going to be hopefully something different and better. But until then, I hope everybody's doing well, and just, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bench. Next will be Councilmember Forbes. Councilmember Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to mimic what my fellow councilmembers have said and say that I too am just really concerned every day with my neighbors and their safety while we face this challenge together, thinking especially of my friends that own and work for small businesses, so I just really encourage us to continue to get takeout and to buy gift cards so that we can continue supporting them. I also am thinking about our first responders, excuse me, especially our police and fire, and I am so thankful for their work in this tough time. And I hope that we can please stay home and give them as little reason to attend to us as possible to keep them safe and their families safe. I want to repeat the words of Councilperson Scherzer, the schools have moved so quickly to respond to the needs of our kids, it's just been incredible, and I know that they're continuing to try to figure out what this looks like for our students going forward, but they're doing just incredible work, and this could possibly change the way education looks in the future too, and so they're moving so quickly. Let's remember that this quarantine won't last forever, but the decisions that we make during this time will have lasting effects. We really do need to do what we can to protect our neighbors right now, and also don't forget that if you're in need or anyone you know is in need, you can always call 211 from any phone, and you'll be connected to resources, so just want to reiterate that. Also, I want to say congratulations to Phil Carwatt and Don Riley and the entire motor pool team on their recognition for excellence from the Government Fleet Magazine, and then also want to congratulate you, Alonda Jones, and her entire team on their 12th year receiving the Award for Excellence from the Government Finance and Officers Association. So I'm still new and I'm still learning, but it seems clear that we ask so much from our staff all the time, we need for them to do so much with so little, and they're not just doing that during crisis, they're doing that all the time, and we are so lucky to have them working for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, since so many things have been covered, I'm only going to cover a couple of things myself. The first is, we've been asked as a society to consider the possibility of donating blood or plasma, especially if you have recovered from COVID-19. There is a need for blood and plasma donations, it can be used, and there's quite a bit of effort to use this kind, the blood or plasma from those who've recovered to try and help those who are still ill, but there's also a need for blood and plasma in general because other emergencies still happen, so if you can, please do so. Second, I want to remind our councilmembers that our next couple of council meetings will be focusing primarily on the budget. Before the end of the month, we should be getting our budget presentation online, and you should review it and be prepared when the meeting, the next meeting, first week of May happens, that will be online as well. Hopefully, the one after that will be live, but we don't know that yet, so do plan on being prepared for the budget. Other than that, I am done, so thank you, and Madam Clerk, we are ready for the next item.
And that would be the reports for the manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, and like last week, I'll mention again to thank all of the city staff, the workers, the division heads, and the department heads are doing, I think, even more with less now. They've created some rotating schedules and are working with skeleton crews, and goes far beyond what you see out there every day. Think about our employees here that are processing payments, they're getting the mail every day, they're getting water turned on and treating your water, treating your wastewater, and they're all working hard, so I appreciate all of those employees. And the second item I wanted to mention is, I received questions from the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and sent you all an email about item number three, council communication number three, which is the purchase for tasers for the police department, and that there was some question of how many are coming, and this is a purchase of 15 tasers that we'll receive on the completion of this purchase, we're just paying for them over a period of five years through a payment plan with the company. The tasers that we currently have at the police department are no longer under a warranty, and they are older technology, so these will be upgraded tasers, and also, this cost includes all the cartridges, all the batteries, all the training, all the maintenance for those five years, so it's really a needed purchase for us. And I also received a question, it was 15, we have more than 15 officers. The officers, they all have their holsters that they keep on their belts, but the tasers are actually turned back in at the end of every shift, and then the next shift picks those up and uses them for that shift. And the final item I wanted to talk about this evening does deal with the budget, as the clerk and the mayor mentioned, our next meeting is going to be a virtual meeting again on May 4th. The Governor's Executive Order allowing these meetings extends a little bit past that date, it doesn't extend to our second meeting in May, so we'll wait to see what we'll do with that meeting. However, our Office of Management Budget has been preparing the budget along with the department heads and staff throughout this spring, and as you all know, the charter requires that the budget be provided to you by the last Monday in April, which is April 27th, and you will get the budget as usual. You'll be emailed a link, which we've been doing for a while now, if you need some assistance with that, or a paper copy, please contact Vicky Davis in the manager's office, she can assist with that, and a link will be on the city website for the public to view as well. What we plan to do is, since we don't know what the meetings will look like, the Office of Management and Budget and Tech Services are going to be recording the budget presentation, and we will send a link to all councilmembers so you can view that prior to the May 4th meeting, and we'll also have that link to the website for the public to see the presentation, and I'm sure we can get that on SGTV as well. And then on the May 7th meeting, or May 4th meeting, we will have staff from the Office of Management and Budget participate in that council meeting to answer any questions that you may have, and Ms. Jones will also likely participate in the next meeting if it's virtual, and if not, the staff will be in council chambers to answer questions. As always, you can always send emails with questions about the budget to Ms. Jones, and she'll get back to you as soon as she can with that, after you receive your copy of the budget and review it, and we'll likely place the agenda, a budget on the agenda for consideration by council on May 18th for that. And that concludes management update. And that concludes management update.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Your next order of business is the consent agenda.
The consent agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city website, and on SGTV Channel one ninety-one. Are there any exceptions to be noted by the clerk? Are there any exceptions? Given that people are muted, I'll ask one more time. Are there any exceptions to be noted by the clerk? Hearing none, we would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
Some will move.
For? Go ahead. State who moved.
Bench.
Bench, and who seconded, please.
Moore.
All right. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? One more time, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Any opposed? The motion is carried. Madam Clerk, we can move on?
Yes, our next order of business is boards, commission, and committee reports.
Are there any reports of city boards, commissions, or committees? Any reports? One, one more time, any reports? Hearing none, we can move on. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. We are now at miscellaneous business.
Is there any other business to come before the council at this time? Any other business? One more time, just.
Yeah. I'd like to do a resolution, if at all possible, supporting the governor's stay-at-home order. And I think that would be nice coming from the city, just saying that we support her efforts.
Is that a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
I'll second it. We'll second it.
Okay. It has been moved by Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Bench to prepare and send a resolution to the state approving, approving of the stay-at-home and other orders of the governor. Is that a correct statement, Madam Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Is there any discussion of the motion on the table? Any discussion? One more time, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? There's none opposed, the motion carries. We would ask for the next meeting, that it be prepared and presented. Madam Clerk?
We are still at miscellaneous business.
Okay. Is there any other, any other business? I haven't heard any, but is there any other business? Any other business? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some will.
Support.
Moved and supported by Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by several. All right. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Hearing, thank you, and good night, everybody.